Okay, F 630 at this time if you'll register your presence by voting yes. Can we show 14 present, we have a quorum.
Commissioner Kirby. And Mr. Melton.
Mr. Clerk.
Do you have 16 present and five absent, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, if you'll read the call.
Notice of public hearing and accordance with Tennessee Code Annotated Section 5-5-105 and 13-7-105, the Board of County Commissioners of Blount County, Tennessee will hold public hearing on March 21, 2013 at 6:30 PM at the Blount County Courthouse Commission Meeting Room for the following proposed amendment to the zoning regulation, resolution of Blount County, Tennessee being Resolution 00-06-010, a resolution to amend the zoning resolution of Blount County, Tennessee adding a new planned rural resort district.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this resolution, if they would come forward and identify themselves at this time. If you'd just give your name before you start and then we'll...
My name is Janice Bible and I live in West Millers Cove Road in District 8. And my question that I would appreciate being addressed is the fact that I'm very concerned about West Millers Cove Road being a very dangerous road. I think it probably meets the specifications as far as the width for a county road, but with the increased traffic due to employees running the proposed brewery at West Millers, Blackberry Farms, excuse me, we've lived there for about 38 years and the road with the increase, with every increase, the road has become more and more dangerous. Signs have been posted, I'm assuming by some of the residents of West Millers Cove Road, for the Hickory Construction people to slow down. I'm not sure it's a wider road problem as much as it is the danger of the employees, and I know you don't have any control over that, but it is such a dangerous road. School buses coming through there and it's just a disaster waiting to happen. We're very concerned, we live in West Millers Cove, our grandchildren live in West Millers Cove. I just wondered if there's any concern by anyone about the increased traffic on this road with all of this development? The dump trucks are nonstop, nonstop, all day long. It's just something that concerns me as a resident and as a grandparent. And I just wanted to let my concerns be known. That basically is all I had to say. If anybody wants to address that later on, I would really appreciate it. I know that Blount County patrols that road constantly. It is a problem with the speeders. This is a one lane, not a one lane, a dead end, little country road, very narrow. Well, I say narrow because of the type of equipment that is now traveling up and down this road. And these construction, the construction workers, they break the speed limit, the employees up there, they break the speed limit. I just don't know how we can get a hold on this to make it safe for the residents that live in the Cove, because it's not just us. I mean, I'd hate to see any of the employees or drivers of these other vehicles, you know, get injured or hurt themselves or hurt someone. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? We declare the public hearing adjourned. Okay, F 645, we'll convene the next public hearing. If you'll please register your presence by voting yes. Commissioner.
You have 17 present, you have four absent, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, if you'll read the call, please.
Notice of public hearing and accordance with Tennessee Code Annotated Sections 5-5-105 and 13-7-105, the Board of County Commissioners of Blount County, Tennessee will convene and hold public hearing on March 21, 2013 at 6:45 PM at the Blount County Courthouse Commission Meeting Room for the following proposed amendments to the zoning regulation of Blount County, Tennessee being Resolution 00-06-010 and specifically the zoning map of Blount County, Tennessee. A resolution to amend the zoning map of Blount County, Tennessee from R2 Rural District 2 to R1 Rural District 1 for a portion of the property located in 6250 Paul Boone Road. The property is identified as part of tax map 126 and parcels 079.00 and 014.00.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Is there anyone present that would like to speak at this public hearing, offer comment and testimony? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed.
All rise. Hear ye, hear ye, hear ye, the Blount County Legislature Body is now in session with the Honorable Jerome Moon Chairman presiding. All persons having business with this honorable commission draw near, give attention, and you shall be heard. God save the United States of America, this great state of Tennessee, and this honorable commission. Reverend Ben Ward, pastor of Springview Baptist Church, will lead us in prayer.
Our heavenly Father, God, we bow before you this day. We thank you for this day that you've blessed us with. Father, another opportunity to make a difference in this world. Father, we thank you for this assembly tonight and we pray your blessing upon it. I pray for each commissioner, God, that you would just give them a clear mind tonight and, Father, help them to make wise and prudent decisions. Father, we thank you for our county in which you've blessed us to live and, Lord, we just pray your protection over it. Bless us now and help everything that's said and done, bring glory and honor to you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Boy Scout Troop 1804 will lead us in the pledge to the allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much, have a seat, please.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the March 21, 2013 Blount County Board of Commissioners meeting. Thank you Reverend Ward for the prayers this evening. And on behalf of the commission, I'd like to thank Boy Scout Troop 1804 for leading us in our pledge. At this time, I'll read the emergency evacuation notice. In the event of emergency evacuation, alarm will sound, everyone should exit the building by the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you've reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building, being mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles. At this time, commission will come to order, register your presence by voting yes.
You have 20 present, one absent, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Chair will stand for motion to set the agenda. Mr. French moves. Mr. Carver seconds. There is a request to add another item of business, that being Resolution 1303-008. It's in your packet at the end of the business as it was sent out. Now, I apologize for getting cart before the horse. Mr. French, will you amend? Will you accept adding? Mr. Carver? Okay, without objection, we will add item F7, which will be taking up Resolution 1303-008. Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, so ordered. Okay, we'll vote on the main motion. Vote yes to set the agenda adding item F7. Vote no not to set.
You have 20 yeses.
20 yeses, zero no. The agenda is set. At this time, we'll move to agenda item B, the consent calendar. Chair will stand for motion on the consent calendar. Ms. Lambert moves, is there a second? Mr. Wright seconds. Discussion. Are the members ready for the question? Vote yes to approve the consent calendar, vote no not to approve.
You have 20 yeses.
20 yeses, zero no. The consent calendar is approved. Agenda item C, public inputs on items on the agenda. Does anyone wish to address the body on items on the agenda? Seeing no hands, there's no items under D or E, we'll move to the first order of new business. F1, the chair will stand for motion on item F1, Resolution 1303-002 to amend the general county fund budget by $19,800. Mr. Lewis moves. And the second is by Mr. Kirby, is that correct? Resolution is to adopt Resolution 1303-002. Discussion. Are the members ready for the question? Vote yes to adopt the resolution, vote no not to adopt.
You have 20 yeses.
20 yeses, zero no. The resolution is adopted. Next item of business, F2, the chair will stand for motion on F2. Resolution 1303-003 to amend the general county fund budget by $70,028.26. Mr. Lael moves. Mr. Carver seconds. Motion is to adopt Resolution 1303-003. Are the members ready for the question? Vote yes to adopt the resolution, vote no not to adopt.
You have 19 yeses and one abstain.
19 yeses, one abstain, resolution adopted. Moving to item F3. Chair will stand for motion on F3. Resolution 1303-004 to amend the educational capital fund budget by $2,600. Mr. French moves. Mr. Lael seconds. Motion is to adopt Resolution 1303-004. Are the members ready for the question? Vote yes to adopt the resolution, vote no not to adopt. Mr. French made the motion, Mr. Lael second. Members are ready for the question. Vote yes to adopt the resolution, vote no not to adopt.
You have 20 yeses.
20 yeses, zero no. The resolution is adopted. Next item of business is F4. Chair will stand for motion on F4. Resolution 1303-005 to extend an agreement with Hill's Pet Nutrition Incorporated beyond current fiscal year for pet food. Mr. Sample moves, Ms. Lambert seconds. The motion is to adopt Resolution 1303-005. Are the members ready for the question? Vote yes to adopt the resolution, vote no not to adopt. 20 yeses, zero no. The motion, the resolution is adopted. The chair will stand for motion on F5. Resolution 1303-006 to amend the zoning resolution of Blount County, Tennessee adding a new planned rural resort district. Mr. Burkhalter moves. Ms. Lambert seconds. The motion is to adopt Resolution 1303-006. Discussion. Are the members ready for the question? Vote yes to adopt the resolution, vote no not to adopt.
You have 20 yeses.
20 yeses, zero no. Resolution is adopted. Next item of business, chair will stand for motion on F6. Resolution 1303-007 to amend the zoning map of Blount County, Tennessee from R2 Rural District 2 to R1 Rural District 1 for the property located 6250 Paul Boone Road being tax, being tax map 126 and part of parcels 079.00 and 014.00. Mr. Kirby moves, is there a second? Mr. Melton seconds, resolution. The motion is to adopt Resolution 1303-007. Mr. Burkhalter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question I'd like to pose to the chair, and I think Mr. Fields or Mr. Lamb might be able to answer this question, Mr. Chairman. Does the, is the, there adequate infrastructure to support this re, this rezoning from R2 to R1 because, that's my question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fields.
There is, Paul Boone Road is a county road up to this property, if that answers your question. It still wouldn't be able to make a major subdivision off of it because it doesn't meet those standards, but as far as the zone is considered, it would be fine.
Then, Mr. Chairman, if I may. What is, what does this allow the property owner to do with it being right up against the Smoky Mountains National Park to be able to change it from an R2 to an R1? What benefits does this give the property owner?
He could have a smaller lot size. And in particularly, what he's wanting to do is divide a lot off of it. It's about, I think it's five acre tract off of, well, not really, about three acres. I hadn't looked into the plat in a while, but that's what it's going to allow him to do and the only reason he pursued it in the first place.
But he can already divide off a five acre tract of land leaving an R2.
Well, it's not a five acre tract, it's, it's like a three acre. It's going to be something smaller than what the R2 would allow.
So, is there some, is there a more restrictive way of being able to accomplish this? Could he divide off that lot and then come back and ask for that one single lot to be zoned, R1?
Well, actually, there's two other lots that could be considered for R1 based on what our description is, and I talked to those property owners to see if they wanted to pursue it, but they didn't at the time. So, I mean, there's more property that probably could be considered R1 out there.
And you might not know the answer to this question. Did he buy the property knowing it was R2 or did he, or was he part of the original when it came through and was originally zoned?
I don't know exactly when he bought it. I think he's had it for quite some time, to be honest with you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Farmer, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, maybe Mr. Fields can answer also, I'll direct to the chair. I'm curious what the prevailing grade on this piece of property is.
Mr. Fields, you're recognized.
We had a slope analysis that was in the packet that it came out to be less than 30 percent for this section that's being considered to be rezoned.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Are the members ready for the question? Pending motion is to adopt Resolution 1303-007. Vote yes to adopt, vote no not to adopt.
You have 17 yeses, two noes.
And one abstain. Resolution is adopted. Next item of business is F7. Chair will stand for motion on item F7, which is Resolution 1303-008 to appropriate funds to pay for property which received no bids at the March 12, 2013 delinquent tax sale. Mr. Burkhalter moves. Mr. Carver seconds. The motion is to adopt Resolution 1303-008. Mr. Lewis, you're recognized.
My question, I think, would go to whoever would bid this property in for the county. And that would be that the commission is appropriating funds to do that, but Tennessee Code Annotated has a couple of conditions as far as making sure the property is environmentally safe before we actually bid it in is, so my question would be, who is going to, who is going to do that for the county before we actually put that bid in?
Clerk and Master, I think it's a party, but I'm going to let Mr. Vineyard speak to that issue. Mr. Vineyard?
The clerk and master is the one that bid this in on behalf of Blount County, and we're asking for permission to pay the taxes in, back to the clerk and master, and if you see fit, to also pay the taxes for 2011 and 2012 to the county trustee. I will be more than happy to see to it that we do all the due diligence that we can prior to the 28th, which is the time that we would make these payments, if at all. I'm very familiar with the concerns about environmental issues in my former life. We didn't even take them to the tax sale if we thought there was an environmental problem.
That's, yeah, so we don't want to put ourselves in a position where it costs us much more than the amount of the bid for the back taxes to clean up an environmental issue that may already exist.
Correct. This is something that just came up literally last week that I was not aware of. In Blount County, fortunately, this is a, an occurrence that has not happened since somewhere around the year 2000. So, we don't have a lot of history with having to take properties back from a tax sale.
Mr. Lewis, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Mr. French, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess the only question I've got is, in the middle of the resolution, it says that the county will pay $29,491.19 for taxes and expenses, and then in the bottom portion, it says we're going to transfer an amount of $55,000. I'm just curious what the difference in the two amounts are going to cover.
Mr. Vineyard?
Thank you. The $29,000 was the amount that was entered in at the clerk and master's tax sale as being the 2010 taxes that were delinquent. In the spreadsheet behind the resolution, there are two additional columns, one for 2011 and the other for 2012. Those are not ready to file suit on to go to a tax sale, and in discussing this with the, with the Blount County trustee, we felt it would be wise if we had all of those paid so as to avoid any unnecessary publication and legal cost if they were to go to a tax sale in a year from now. So, it's three years taxes.
Mr. French, you're all, Mr. Folks, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I have a question on the larger tax, tax delinquency situation here. In the very useful statistical tables that you put up on the internet, Mr. Vineyard, it shows that as of the end of 2011, which is the most recent year we have data for, that we had $1,690,000 in delinquent taxes. Now, here we're talking about $55,000 worth, and I guess my question is, what's going on with the rest of it?
That question is in order, and I think Mr. Vineyard's prepared to address that. These are the ones that no one bid on, but, Mr. Vineyard, you're recognized.
The amount that you would refer to as being delinquents would still be what remains on the taxes receivable to be collected. They're delinquent under law if they're not paid in the current year. They take on a delinquent status then on March 1, if not paid by February. Then we would carry them as a receivable, earn interest and penalty on those until it comes time to file tax suit. They still earn interest and penalty during that period of time. Then when they go and turned over to the clerk and master for a tax sale, it stops the interest and penalty at that time. We bid in at what's owed the county. Someone either bids above that and takes possession for a one-year period to be redeemed by the former property owner, and whoever takes possession at that time is entitled to 10% over and above the amount they paid on the taxes. We would be entitled to the same privilege in the event we pay any of these taxes.
Okay, but the way I'm reading this is as of the end of fiscal 11, which would have been June of 11, we had $1,690,000 of unpaid delinquent taxes. We're talking about $50,000 here. My question is, what's the status of the other $1,550,000 of taxes?
I think you answered that. There's people who've bid in, who've bid in and they're going through the process of the one-year wait for the owner to redeem.
No, as I understand this, the, we had $55,000 worth for which no bids were submitted.
Go ahead, Mr. Vineyard.
No, let me clarify. On the spreadsheet we've attached, there were $29,491.19 that no one outbid the county at the tax sale.
Correct.
So, for these 41 parcels of property only, we are providing you the delinquent taxes that remain on them for 2011 and 2012. So, specifically to your question, what are the delinquencies for 2011? You said it was roughly $1,600,000. We're only bringing you 41 of those parcels that have, that make up $13,977 of that delinquent $1,600,000.
So, then can I assume that we've collected the other $1,550,000?
No, you cannot. You can assume that we are still pursuing collection of those by the trustee. If we fail to collect those by their one-year delinquent status, they will be turned over If we fail to collect those by their one-year delinquent status, they will be turned over and processed for a tax sale.
Well, since this was June of 11, they all should be one-year delinquent.
June 11 would have been tax year 2010.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vineyard. Mr. Folks, you have another comment?
Okay, what, this gets more confusing. Help me here. 2011, what's on your spreadsheet here that was on the statistical tables was 2011. Now that, you're telling me that's as of what date?
Mr. Folks, the, the motion on the floor is the resolution that speaks to the appropriation of funds to pay for the property that received no bids March 12, so we need, we need to focus and keep our comments to the, the resolution on the floor, sir.
Okay, respectfully, we need, at some point, Mr. Chairman, to have, I guess, the trustee here to tell us what's going on with this $1,600,000. We're desperate for money here, and our delinquent taxes back in '07 were only $56,000 in total, and that number has soared to $1,690,000. And we need somebody to tell us what's going on to collect this stuff. We need the money.
Thank you, Mr. Folks. Are the members ready for the question? The motion is to adopt Resolution 1303-008. Vote yes to adopt, vote no not to adopt. 20 yes, zero no. The motion, the resolution is adopted. At this time, we'll move to item G, statements and announcements. Mr. Vineyard, you're recognized. Let me turn you back on. Hold on. Go forward.
If I may, I'd like to make two announcements. One, I'd like to introduce Susan Geno, who is our accounting manager. Susan is rejoining us. She had a previous stint of employment here at Blount County, and I'm pleased that she is elected to come on board. She's been with us approximately two weeks, and we're glad to have her. So if you have need of information and I'm not available, then certainly you can contact her for any information. Second announcement is, I would like to make you aware that we just recently went through a ratings review by Fitch Ratings on our bond ratings. We were last reviewed by Fitch in, on April 1, 2011. At that time, we had a AA minus credit rating from them. They submitted a questionnaire containing 18 pieces of information they wanted us to respond to, provided those responses back in writing, and then we had an hour and a half conference call along with our financial advisor, PFM, out of Memphis. We received word last Friday that they have renewed our AA minus credit rating and provided us a stable outlook on the finances of Blount County, so that's something that each of you should be very proud of, and the citizens of this community ought to be very proud of. That'd be the fourth highest credit rating that you can receive in public finance.
Thank you, Mr. Vineyard. Anyone else? Seeing no lights, we'll move to item H, public input on items not on the agenda. If you'll come forward, sir, recognize. If you'll give your name, sir, and.
My name's Douglas Spenton from Alcoa, and I'm angry. This is from a book called A Nation of Moochers by Charles Sykes, with a few additions from my personal experience, and it's called I Piggy Bank. My 401K is down 30%, and my employer's just cut the match, and it looks like I may have to work till I'm 70 years old. I also pay for pensions to public employees who retired in their 50s. Here in Blount County, I will pay more than 12% of the cost of our generous pensions for county employees while they pay just 5%. I will also pay for all the post-retirement costs of medical insurance for county employees. I don't have enough money to go on vacation this year, but I paid my share of the federal government's $2.6 million grant to teach Chinese prostitutes to drink responsibly. I drive a 1997 Honda Accord, but I had to pay for my neighbor's $41,000 electric car. I also bailed out the United Auto Workers. I contribute to my children's 529 college savings plan, but since I don't qualify for financial aid, I pay for other people's kids to go to school as well. I exercise regularly, watch my cholesterol, pay for my own health insurance as well as co-pays and deductibles. I will also pay for the full cost of medical insurance for our Blount County employees while I, while they pay nothing. I pay taxes for Medicare, Medicaid, and various medical programs for poor children, and now I will get to subsidize the healthcare of several, of several million more Americans. My small business just lost its line of credit, but I paid to bailout Citigroup, AIG, and Goldman Sachs, whose executives got, whose executives' bonuses were bigger than my entire net worth. I pay my mortgage, but I also pay to bailout banks that made risky loans. I also pay for the $220 million county debt along with the costly swaps that serve no purpose other than to make the Sharpie financier that sold them to you very rich. I pay for groceries for my family, but I buy dinner for more than 49 million food stamp recipients. I also pay for school lunches and breakfast since other parents apparently can't be expected to feed their kids. I get red meat once a week, but I pay for urban hipsters who buy organic salmon at Whole Foods. I pay my electricity, gas bills, but I also pay for other people's air conditioning, cell phones, digital televisions, new windows, subsidized rent, and remodeling. Because I work hard and am successful, I am in the 10% of Americans who now pay more than 71% of the total federal income tax. The top 50% of earners pay 97%. In other words, the bottom half of American earners, theoretically 50% of the population, pay less than 3% of the federal income taxes. I pay for them. I pay property taxes, sales taxes, exercise taxes, taxes on my phone, cable, water, social security, and Medicare taxes. I also help pay the bills for nearly half of the households who no longer pay any federal income tax. I also pay the bills for 60 to 70% of the households who receive more from the government than they pay in. I expect no gratitude for this. I understand that the transfer of wealth from makers to takers is seen as morally pure than the efforts of those who created wealth in the first place. I know my role. I'm the piggy bank, and I'm damn tired of it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no hands? Seeing no lights? Chair will stand for motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.